Kids, call a meeting in order.
First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Steve?
All right, please. The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under thy, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Swartz?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Mayor Protem Hamm?
Here.
And Councilmember Doncheck and Mayor Brown are absent. First item on the agenda is oral communications. Members of the audience who wish to address council on matters that are within the jurisdiction of the City of San Clemente, but not separately listed on the agenda, may do so during the oral communications portion of the meeting. A total time limitation of 30 minutes is allocated for oral communications, Part One, with each speaker being allotted three minutes, which should give his or her presentation.
I have one card.
One card. Okie doke. Before we start, seeing here from, looks like a new face, Anthony LaFrano, I just want to make a point that today we have Assistant City Manager Eric Sun sitting with us because James Maxinoff, the city manager, is in Sacramento lobbying for us to stop the toll road. So, that's why we have him here. With that, Mr. LaFrano?
Good afternoon. My topic is the transient invasion of North Beach, and if it continues, we won't have to worry about VRBO because nobody will visit our town. It's important for the City of San Clemente to stay in control of the city. Sacramento is trying to run the show across all cities. The sanctuary topic is separate from here, but I definitely think that some of the cities in Southern California are doing the right thing. The homeless problem in California reminds me of the Albert Camus novel, The Plague. And we cannot let this plague take over our town. Even the mayor of San Francisco, who's the temporary mayor after Ed Lee passed away, has had enough with people camping on his sidewalks. And he said that if you are camping on the sidewalk and you refuse help, you have to leave. Being homeless is not a crime, okay? But being homeless and refusing help is a moral crime. I was here specifically to discuss the fire that we had on Pico and Del Cerro about a week ago. And I had some harsh words to say originally, but driving down here today, I saw the bobcat out there clearing the brush. So, I'm glad that that's happening. My biggest concern is people camping on Pico in the canyon because I live right across there. I don't want my community to be, or Marblehead to be the next Santa Rosa. I don't want my kids to be displaced, living in a hotel for nine months while we rebuild our house, at least fight the insurance companies because some homeless guy lit up the canyon. So, I appreciate the work that you guys are doing there. Let's not blame it on Marblehead, okay? They didn't invite these people here to camp on their property. We have to blame it on the enablers in the city and many more. The time for compassion has ended, and we should have no excuses. Prop 47 and AB 109 are excuses, but Beverly Hills and Palo Alto do not have a homeless problem. So, we need to call them and figure out what they are doing. And ironically, they're the center of the progressive movement here in California. The state of the city right now is what happened at the Miramar Theater the other day when there was a bum urinating and masturbating in public, right by North Beach. Enough. Enough. Another transient BA'd people sitting at the park, taxpayers, trying to hang out at the park next to the Ole Hansen swimming pool that you guys paid $8 million to renovate. And one of the council members asked for us to have compassion towards these people. A guy BA-ing our citizens, have compassion? What do you want us to do? Turn the other cheek? We have to, we, you guys, we got to fight for the city. What happened in North Beach the other day is not good for the city, it's not good for business, it's not good for families. And don't lose control of the city to the Sacramento freak show. Thank you.
Anthony, thank you.
Could we have a motion waiving and full of all resolutions?
Second?
Motion by Hamm, second by Ward. All's in favor? Aye. Pass is 302.
Post-session report, city attorney?
There's no reportable action taken.
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion unless council staff or the public request removal of an item for separate discussion and action. And two, a couple of members of the public have requested that the planning commission regular meeting minutes of April 8th be discussed.
So, 6A1? Sorry, some speakers for 6A1, Joanne? Is that what we're telling them?
On the consent calendar you're talking about?
Yeah, staff.
Yeah. I'm going to pull it too.
Okay. So, I'm not going to move the balance because that's only one. So, we'll just go ahead and skip to members of the audience here. First person's going to be Jim Rulon, Diane Stiefel, my apologies, and then Jürgen Stiefel after her.
Thank you, Jim Rulon, resident of San Clemente, also a member of the Planning Commission, speaking only for myself tonight. And just for the record, I recused from item 8C at the Planning Commission for the minutes that you're looking at. And I'm asking you, before you approve the minutes, to reject item 8C, the STLU ordinance recommendation from the Planning Commission. There's a few issues with it, probably most fundamentally is the Planning Commission made its recommendation based on significantly incorrect facts. They were told, for instance, that the, there was a hard limit of 20% of the residential units could, only 20% could be vacation rentals. In fact, that number's closer to 95% in the North Beach area. It's probably similar in the Montalva Loop because there's similar makeup there. Also, your original direction back in November was to consider these areas, to just look at, should they be included, should they not be included? In fact, the Planning Commission sort of stated, well, our hands are tied because of the settlement, and so it wasn't really considered. They didn't follow that kind of instruction, nor do I, did I see any of that, that kind of instruction communicated to the Planning Commission in their staff report. They also didn't look at any mitigation factors. This is known and documented as an incompatible use in the residential zone. So, it's incumbent to, you know, on these committees and commissions to look at mitigation factors, see what needs to be done to balance things out and do what they can. And the only thing discussed was the parking, but that is not a mitigation factor yet because it was just an idea. There was no structure or schedule or cost or anything like that that was allowed to be considered. So, I don't think that you, that their conclusion is one that you can base your, your moving forward on. So, I think the best thing to do would be to reject the recommendation and actually send it back to Planning Commission so they have a chance to consider it with the right facts, consider it with a list of creative mitigation measures so they can get back to you with the best possible recommendation. So, thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for helping us all protect our city and keep it safe. I appreciate what the mayor has written in some of the newspaper articles, and I've tried to go with that, that what you're trying to do in the community. The reason why I'm actually talking tonight is I'm a resident, I'm an owner. I've lived in the community for 14 years. I'm very aware of a lot of issues that we have. We have a construction defect lawsuit. We have people climbing over our fence. We have a lot of things, and I'm begging the council and the planning commission to please not add another burden onto our community with 14 cars coming in and out. There is no, with the California State, there's a small family, which is eight, and there's a large family, which is 14. And the Planning Commission does not need to make an exemption to make this zoned from residential to a business. One thing I just want to say for sure, that this is on the record, the minutes are inaccurate. The owner, who was also asked directly if she lives in the residence, she replied yes. I would like that, please, to be put in the minutes if the minutes do become approved. One of the commissioners said that he had listened to it to the entire evening. As an architect, he was sitting right over there. And he said, at the last minute, before the vote, you cannot fool me. This is not a single-family home. And further, he said, I have a large family childcare on my street. I can tell you there is more traffic, there is more noise, and there's more cars. And after every sentence, he said, "A lot, a lot, a lot." And that is not in the minutes, sir. The commissioner, one of, another commissioner stated, the planning commissioner, you need to please remember that we have on file, the next-door neighbor, an owner, was on file saying that they disapprove of this, they are mostly affected. The other thing is that this has been said as a typical San Clemente, Talega home or typical San Clemente. There's not any San Clemente home that is inviting six to eight to 10 to 14 children every single day to their home. And they could also make this, that they could have a shift in the morning, a shift in the afternoon. Under the large family care, they can have, they can care for these children up to 24 hours. And so, I just wanted to say that there are many things. I picked out three examples that were not in the minutes, that the planning commissioners, that actually were trying very hard to bring some common sense into this area. Another one of the commissioners said, because it's on the outside, on the edge of the property, that he would maybe approve it. Well, the problem is that you have to drive completely through half of our community to get to that property that's on the edge. I do have a picture here. It's not a cul-de-sac. It's a mini parking lot at the end of the street that has eight to 10 cars parked there all the time. That means the children will have to walk behind, and their mothers have to walk behind the eight to 10 parking, mini parking lot that the cars are coming out. And there are six double-car garages they must walk by to. And my children are grown. I have three college students. One graduated from USC Claremont McKenna and went to the Air Force Academy and finished up at UCI. I'm a grandma. I understand childcare. And I don't have any children at home right now, but the safety of these children...
Diane, we're going to hear from your husband as well, I think, right?
I appreciate it. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah. No, no. I just want to tell you, my, I love my neighbors, I love my community, I love San Clemente. I am concerned about the safety of these children and their parents.
Thank you, Diane.
Okay?
Jürgen?
My name is Jürgen Stiefel. I live in the same community as this lady. And I'm on the board. I'm a board member of this community. And I also want to oppose the minutes of the Planning Commission because it was stated in there that the board was not represented. And the board was represented. We, we had our legal advisor writing three letters starting March 16, March 7, March 16, March 21, and April 17, and explaining the situation and the, our situation of the community. And we have only that, you know, it's kind of between a single-family home and condominium, townhome-style homes. We have 302 units in there. So, it's totally different than any other areas in Talega with single-family homes. It's a very condensed area and, as it was mentioned before, and it's written several times, they have to drive all through our community to get to this home. So, the only way I want to oppose that it's, we were, or the board was represented all along as, as far as we got to know about this in February 2018. Thank you.
Thank you, Jürgen. Before we move on, most people here aren't here to speak this evening about a daycare below the Ralph and Talega that they're here on another issue. But, do we have staff? Cecilia, are you here? There you are. So, I see in the minutes notes that staff's going to condition the approval down to 10 children, which was a concern. And then the second one is that you're going to come back to the commission. So, I guess I would just ask that the same report that you report back to the commission the city council also gets, so that if we have any concerns, that we can address those appropriately.
Well, the conditional use permit has actually been appealed. So, the whole CUP will be for the, be before the city council, and it's already scheduled for the June 12th hearing.
There we go.
So, it's taken care of?
Yes.
We'll be hearing it anyway?
Yes. Thank you.
Jürgen and Diane, good news. Okay. With that, well...
I'll move.
No, no, no.
Oh, you have some issues. That's right.
And we haven't taken up what Mr. Rulon brought up. No, no, he brought up 6C, which was the minutes for the STLU meeting. So, mine is 6B, and I would like to see that called up for review to the city council. Not because I'm not, I don't like the project. It's JD's. And it's for their, they want to do live amplified music. There was a lot of conditions and concerns by the Planning Commission for this, and I'm aware that they were going to do sound studies. He's currently doing sound studies to try to figure out where he's going to do it. I just would like a little more information. I'd like to know the sound studies and the location he wants to do. I understand, is it Mr. Shea that owns this? Very good operator in the community. I'm not making any statement about his business at all. I think he does a wonderful job. It's just because this is in the triangle area, and I'm concerned about the smallness of the initial building they're looking at. I would just like it to come before us, and then I think maybe there will be the sound studies by then, and we'll have more to talk about. So, I'd like to call it up, but just, just so that I feel a little bit better about it.
Before we call it up, Cecilia might send back up to the microphone on this one. So, if we go forward with approval of the minutes this evening, when would Mr. Shea be able to enact his permit? Let me rephrase that. Is there any outstanding issues like we experienced the last item that was pulled by someone with this item, or is this the first time you're hearing of an issue?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay. So, pending no issues, would he be able to start operating events next week?
Yes. If he was, if he got his, some of the prior, or the pre-conditions of approval that the Planning Commission identified, like the sound testing, and made some of the improvements to the building that the Planning Commission recommended, then those could, the live entertainment could begin immediately.
Okay.
Unless we call it up. And he could, what's the, is there a hurry, like Memorial Weekend?
No, it's just, you know, unfortunately, the city had some SB 2 woes last year during development of his business, and so he was already delayed 12 months?
Yes.
Due to, you know, situation outside of his control.
Why was he delayed on SB 2?
Because of permitting.
Oh, not our doing.
Yeah.
And I don't want to do that to him, but I think he has not answered where he wants it, and I have a concern if it's in that front, small, very small space, I don't think that's appropriate for live music. Yet I've heard he's got another space that he wants to use, but I just want that clarified, that that's the space, because I think it would be wonderful.
Cecilia, is there a remedy that we could bring it back but not uphold it if he has something planned in the near future?
You know, he, he did mention at the planning commission hearing that there was another location on the property that he would prefer having amplified sound, not live entertainment, thanks, Chairperson Brown corrected me. And we told them that we could administratively review that change, and if we could consider it in substantial conformance with what the planning commission approved, then it wouldn't have to come back before the decision-maker for a permit amendment, we would just process it administratively.
So would you be okay with giving staff the oversight on that, knowing what your concerns are?
Only that I don't think that it can be in the front, front part of his establishment. I mean-
And that's what he has approval for now with the-
Right, so that's my concern, is I'd rather have it be the other part and not the front part, because it doesn't make sense to me to have amplified music there.
Do we have time to bring it up next week? Can we get a notice and bring it up next week on Tuesday?
Joanne?
No. You have to have 10 days in the newspaper, and we need lead time for that.
So that puts us out, May, June, puts its first meeting in June. Is that correct?
June 12.
I think we can do that.
That's, that's-
Is he gonna be really mad at me?
This is a month. And just so you know, when you open the doors, we're opening the doors both ways, it's a discussion both ways.
I agree, but I, all I heard from the planning commission was a lot of concerns, and I've been in there many times, it's very small, I just cannot see amplified music there, but I learned he had another place. I wanted to, I wanted to hear more if it's going to go there, because there I would not have a concern. And I know he's a good operator, but it's the, it's the triangle. Can't see amplified music in that one little spot contributing to the rest of the triangle in a good way. And even though I think he wants to do something different, but I'd like to hear what he wants to do.
Okay.
You know, I could call him-
We're kind of having the hearing before the hearing, and so-
Oh, yeah, we are.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure, we're trying to say the reasons for it.
I know, yeah, thank you.
But as far as what the planning commission did in their conditions, how would that modify? You're waiting to hear on the second part of the property?
Yeah. My understanding is that they were required to test prior to the amplified music so that we could get sort of a baseline for sound and noise. And there might be some tenant improvements to help attenuate the sound. Those would, we would want those to occur before the amplified music were to begin.
When you say tenant, is that the person that's staying above it or next to it? Or is it the tenant, his, he's the tenant?
It's, it's-
So there's no mitigation? Is that for mitigation for any dwellings that are by it, or just?
It was intended to address the adjacent residential.
Okay.
Okay, so did you guys discuss at all regarding the volume of sound that you're gonna test for outside the facility that would be acceptable? Was that in the discussion? Is that in our code as far as, is, I thought we have something like that regarding, regarding sound?
Yeah, we do, we do have requirements or maximums in the code that can't be exceeded. And so if there, there is a complaint, or we are to go out there and do sound testing, we'd have to make sure that it didn't exceed those noise decibels.
Again, I'm inclined for time purposes to allow staff to, I think that we can give them a good ability to handle it.
Here's the issue. I hear that totally, but this is a CUP, and it runs with the property forever. It's not just a 15, special activity permit, 15 a year, he didn't ask for that, he asked for a CUP. He's a good operator, the next person may not be. And so in the triangle, in this little teeny-tiny part of it, in this restaurant, we're gonna allow amplified music. And my impression of the code is the sound can't go beyond the curb to be, right? To, can't be really heard at the curb. So that's my thing. You know, if it wasn't a CUP, or a special activities permit, I would, no problem. But because it's a CUP, I'd rather hear what the sound is, what he's gonna do, and where it's gonna be at. But unless-
Kathy, I appreciate your concern, and I see where you're coming from, but I'm, I think I'm gonna have to say no on this one. I'm not gonna support bringing it back for council.
Then what can we do to mitigate a CUP in the triangle if it doesn't work out?
There is-
What's our options?
There is a permit condition that the planning commission put in there for a 12-month check-in period. So we would revisit the CUP in 12 months to see how it's operating.
Can we do it in three months? Can council change that?
How about six? Can we do that, Scott?
Can council change a planning commission recommendation?
You can't hear a permit, that's not before you, so I think you've given all the direction-
I think your concern's been heard, Kathy, and I understand where you're coming from. But I just, I'm not gonna help you.
You're gonna add to the triangle.
Yes, I'm gonna make the triangle a vibrant, successful business area.
Steve, you agree with that? Okay.
Yeah, I do.
Thanks, guys. Thanks, Don.
So now Jim Ruland's concern.
So this is my thoughts on Jim Ruland's concern. Jim, I appreciate you taking time to, first off, serve on the planning commission, then second, to step down and serve your community even further by addressing your concerns from a very knowledgeable perspective. I'm not gonna reject the planning commission meeting minutes and ask them to renew it. I think the planning commission does a lot of good work, a lot of difficult work, and I don't think this is the time to do it. We are gonna hear this item this evening, and if we see any issues, we can make adjustments at that point. So I won't be supporting rejecting the planning commission minutes, but I do appreciate your perspective, so, thank you.
So with that, I'll move the item.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Ward, second by Schwartz, all in favor? Aye. Pass is 302. Thank you for your comments.
The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed 10 minutes, and public testimony not to exceed three minutes per speaker. Following closure of the public hearing, the city council will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. This evening's public hearing is a continued public hearing concerning regulation of short-term lodging units, zoning ordinance amendment 17-392.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, city council members, Carl Steele, senior planner with the planning division. And I'm here, that's not the right one. That's, that's not my, yeah.
I apologize.
No, I'm comfortable with my slides. Okay, there we are. Okay. So I'm here to present on STLU zoning amendment ZA 17-392. So in May 2016, the city council adopted the STLU ordinances. The ordinances provided a comprehensive set of regulations for STLUs, and the Vacation Rental Alliance challenged certain aspects of the ordinances in litigation. In November 2017, the city council initiated this zoning amendment related to special consideration to issues with the ordinances. And the alliance has consented to the council-initiated changes in an April 2018 settlement agreement to end the litigation. So the proposed amendment eliminates an STLU-specific parking standard, leaving STLUs subject to the same parking regulations that apply to residential uses. It allows a star owner to satisfy the occupancy requirement by having a property manager with standards for manager training and qualifications. It designates STLU-permitted areas by reference to a map of short-term lodging units, STLU-allowed areas, instead of a parcel description. It expands the STLU-allowed areas to include some additional lots on Buena Vista and Avenida Montalvo. And the amendment allows for an extended amortization period of an additional eight years for 10 years total for non-conforming STLUs, which applies to the RH and RM zones if the owner applies for an extension, is in good standing, and meets certain requirements. So I'd like to take you through the allowed areas maps that are proposed to be added to the zoning ordinance as appendix C. This map, the maps show both existing and proposed allowed areas, so I'll discuss which areas are new. This is called Sheet 1. It shows overall where the allowed areas are within the city with reference to subsequent sheets for each specific area, as you can see with the boxes. So for North Beach, this map shows the new proposed area. As you can see on the south side of this North Beach allowed area along Buena Vista and the red crosshatching, and so if we added that, what you see here is what's on Sheet 2, but would go into the ordinance that would add that area with the new lots on Buena Vista added at the bottom. Sheet 3 shows the downtown allowed area, which is an existing allowed area, there's no changes there. Sheet 4 shows the Pier Bowl allowed area, which for reference corresponds with residentially-designated and mixed-use designated areas in the Pier Bowl, and that's also an existing allowed area. Sheet 5 shows the South El Camino Real allowed area, which is also an existing allowed area. And then Sheet 6 shows the proposed Montalvo Lobiero allowed area, which is also a new, a new allow area. The allowed areas maps make it easier for staff and the public to understand where the STLUs are allowed in the city moving forward and are part of the ordinance amendment before you. So to give some perspective, here's a map with all the STLUs in the city that remain subject to the ordinance plotted, and also showing the new amortization area in orange. The map shows the STLU locations in the allowed areas outlined in black for the existing areas and red for the new proposed areas. And the STLUs in the orange areas are those that can apply for an extended amortization of an additional eight years, and those in the white are those that are outside these areas but could still apply for a hardship extension. It's important to note that the dots may represent a number of STLUs at the same location. And I'd also like to mention stars, and stars are also found in the ordinance. There are four permitted stars, so many fewer obviously than this. The four permitted stars are located between the Pier Bowl and the downtown area, all kind of in the same spot, which would be within the orange area between the Pier Bowl and the downtown. Stars are allowed in all of the allowed areas as well, but there are not any stars within the allowed areas currently permitted. And then to give you some of the stats on the ground, here the counts of STLUs in the allowed areas, and looking specifically just at the residential parts, the table lists the dwelling units within the residentially designation, designated portions of the allowed areas. This, just to give you kind of some perspective of where that 20% cap is. The number of STLUs that would be allowed in the area under the 20% cap and the number of STLUs that exist in these areas. So in the left-hand column, you have existing dwelling units within, for example, in the North Beach and Pier Bowl RH and RM areas, so just the residential areas. And then in the middle, you have what would be a 20% cap, and then on the right, far right, you have how many current STLUs there are. So as you can see, it's about 8% capacity across these areas, the residential areas alone, and there's still capacity for STLUs in those areas. So moving, so moving forward, there's still capacity within these areas. So related to coastal commission, the amendment does not add any new restriction on tourists serving short-term lodgings in the coastal zone, does not create any impediment to public access, change the density or intensity of the use of land, or cause any division of land, and therefore is not considered development under the Coastal Act. The city has agreed through certification of the land use plan to look further into implementation of this ordinance as part of the coastal commission's review of the implementation plan. And the amendment has been reviewed under the California Environmental Quality Act, and staff recommends that the amendment is exempt under CECL guidelines section 15301, which exempts the operation permitting leasing and licensing of existing structures where the action would lead to negligible expansion of use and common sense exemption under section 15061, that the amendment has not, does not have potential to result in a significant impact on the environment due to the revisions being administrative in nature. And then at the April 18th planning commission meeting, the commission voted 4-1, with one commissioner absent and one commissioner recused, to concur with staff and recommend approval of the amendment to the city council, with the suggestion that staff look further into the parking solutions related to these uses in the future within some of these areas. And therefore, staff and the planning commission recommend approval of the proposed amendment to the city council. And I'd like to follow up that pursuant to council direction, at the continuance, we posted additional signs in the last week, specifically in the Montalvo Loop area and also in the Buena Vista area. We also placed an additional ad in the newspaper, and I also sent emails directly to the stakeholders who had previously submitted comments and requested that we follow up with them. So I did that in the last week as well, and this concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions of staff before we open the public hearing?
I have a quick question. The chart that you showed that showed the possible STLUs, that's just based on current number of units we know are on the street. It could be modified by, some of those buildings have HOAs and don't allow it, but we don't look at that at this point. So we're not absolutely agreeing that there's like 200 that can go on a street. That means nothing, it's just a general, that's what we think could be available.
Correct, Councilmember Ward, that's, their HOAs could have their own limits and not allow for an STLU, and that's written into our business license code, that if an HOA does not approve it, we don't approve the business license. So this is just the capacity purely from a, where, how many dwelling units do we have, and where are they, and in what zone, and then trying to find a cap. So there, there probably is much fewer potential, but we're just trying to give you a gist of what's out there.
That would be the max.
Yes.
If, if all the stars were aligned, and there wasn't any-
No pun intended.
That would be the max-
I'm not talking, I'm not figuratively talking stars.
Councilmember Ward, I would say that would be the max within those residential areas. It gets a little more complicated in the mixed-use areas, so I didn't provide additional stats on that, because that's just something staff's gonna have to look a bit closer at once we enact the ordinance, but it gives you a gist of what's going on in the residential areas. And then, as I, as I briefly mentioned in the, in the presentation, Commissioner Ruland has pointed out, stars are allowed within the allowed areas, there aren't limits currently in the ordinance on stars, there are none that exist within the allowed areas.
Thank you, Paul. We're gonna take Steve's question here.
Thank you. Steve, you have a question?
Yeah, I'm also assuming that that number that you gave as far as the maximum capability to go into those areas also didn't, because it would be difficult to include what, because they have to be 300 feet apart. So that would also reduce the number of potential units, because of that 300-foot barrier between one and another, that could also further reduce that number.
Thank you. Just one clarification there, Councilmember Schwartz, the 300-foot setback doesn't apply in the allowed areas, so, but that's true outside.
This is like, this is like a call after we go through this. Paul, thanks for the presentation.
Sure.
And-
Thank you.
We'll be opening up public hearing. Before we start the public hearing, Joanne, are you gonna give your three-minute spiel? Or did you already give that?
I already gave it.
Okay. So ladies and gentlemen, obviously this is a very hot-button issue for a lot of you, and as you can tell, we have other city business to attend to aside from just this one issue. There's people in the audience, I'm sure to your left and your right, that are supportive of you and ones that aren't. There's people whose livelihood depend on this, and there's people whose lives depend on this on the opposite side. So if we could all have some decorum and some respect from each other, I would appreciate that. I know once we start clapping, it becomes contagious, and then clapping turns into booing, and I would appreciate everybody respect each other's position, and we have a great hearing, and everybody gets three minutes, so that's what I requested. Other than that, if you could just line up behind the speakers, the first three speakers, that'd be great, and then I'll read three more as we get along. So the first person is Robert Defense Defues. No, he lives at 2490 South Olavista?
That must be me.
Okay. Robert, tell me your name before you start, three minutes.
Robert Peters, I'm on the board for-
Oh, that's a P, not a D, and a T, not an F. Check.
That's one of the things that goes with me.
My writing's just as bad as yours, so no harm, no foul. Mr. Peters.
Live at 2490 South Olavista. Regardless how many times the planning commission says it, we don't live on Montalvo. We didn't, people say, "Where have you been for the last two or three years? You didn't tell us. You told the Texas investor that came into our complex recently, you told the real estate professionals, but you didn't tell us." When I tell people in our complex that we're in it, they say, "Well, where does it say that?" Well, if you look at the amendment, on the last page, there's a map with a colored square, that means we're in it. It's just not right. As you're going down Olavista, our complex is at the end on the right, kind of looks like a Motel 6. It's got some of the same characteristics. If you've ever stayed in a Motel 6, when somebody drops something on the third floor, you hear on the first floor. If you imagine, remember Hollywood Squares, where there's, that's the complex we live in, it's like that. This investor from Texas was a little early, she's part of that vacation whatever, and she was really aggressive. She expected us to manage her unit for us. If, if the occupants were out of control, she wanted to call- If the occupants were out of control, she wanted to call, okay? Just wasn't workable. We have sewer problems. Those buildings were not designed to be a hotel. You know, this was in 1970s, kind of wild back then. I don't even think San Clemente did the permits. Next, I want to talk about the city mission, safety. It says maintain a safe and healthy atmosphere. This doesn't do that. We have a small common area, and when you get 56 people there, you don't know what unit they came from, you don't know who's in charge, and the owners aren't there. And then if we have an issue, the police come. It's usually 2:00 in the morning, and they want a board member there to do an arrest or anything. And as soon as they come, out comes the smartphones and they start videoing, and that poor officer, they don't really know what to do, but they want somebody on the board to tell them who to arrest. And it, we don't know who's there. We don't know who to arrest, and I think it's really unsafe. And if spring break in Florida comes to our area in San Clemente, we can't handle it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Okay. The next few cards are Anthony Lefrono, Kim Robinson, and Clayton Robinson. Thanks for your penmanship, by the way. Anthony left?
No.
Okay. Moving on. Kim Robinson, Clayton Robinson, and then Bill Osifer. Did I get it?
Hi, I'm Kim Robinson, and I have owned property and lived on Buena Vista for 20, almost 20 years. I love San Clemente. My property is on the oceanfront side of the street. I want the approved STLUs to include my street as the new proposal is being discussed. In my experience, most vacation rental people are families who come into the area to visit and enjoy San Clemente and our beaches. I have found them to be respectful of our property and of our neighborhoods. Over the years, living here has been, the apartment renters have been problems to me because they have regular parties, parties on regular bases, and they never go home and they never change. They're ongoing until they move. The vacation rental people come and go, yes, if there is a problem, but they always go in a few days. Please pass the extension of licensed STLU on our street of Buena Vista. We want to be licensed and want others to follow the laws as we have. Thank you.
Thanks for considering adding Buena Vista to the North Beach study area for STLUs. We were not a part of the group that sued the city over this issue, but we did address the council earlier this year encouraging you to reconsider adding Buena Vista as you're proposing here. I encourage a yes vote on the proposal. As the concerns expressed about having STLUs on the Buena Vista Loop, here are a few thoughts. Number one, a majority of the residences on Buena Vista comprise apartments, condos, and vacation homes rather than owner-occupied, single-family dwellings, and thus, it's a perfect neighborhood for STLUs. The issues often raised pertain mostly to unlicensed STLU rentals, which ignore common decency in regard to things such as trash management, the number of occupants, and parking. What is needed is better enforcement of unlicensed STLUs rather than forbidding law-abiding ones. Allowing STLUs provides the city control, assuring adequate parking, appropriate occupancy, and balanced usage. So it is a good thing for the city to control. Without it, they just happen beyond the city's control. If STLUs are not allowed, most of the units will be utilized instead for apartments. Apartment dwellers in the area tend to be younger and somewhat wilder than most who rent the very expensive STLUs. Having lived on the street for over 15 years, I can attest to the regular parties throughout the area sponsored by local apartment dwellers. Those utilizing STLUs for vacation tend to come as a family in one car, whereas apartment dwellers tend to have one car per adult residing, that was whoever's living in that apartment, significantly increasing street parking. Whereas STLUs may use one car for a two-bedroom house in a single, singles living, and that might take two or three cars. Finally, increasing STLUs provides a significant overt tax stream through the collection of short-term occupancy taxes, which unlicensed STLUs don't pay. But also, a hidden tax boost through the increased revenue as vacationers boost our economy through the goods and services they purchase in retail, fuel, dining, and other businesses throughout the city. Finally, most of the people coming from STLUs are coming from out of the area, most even from out of state, so they bring in fresh revenue who otherwise wouldn't come to our motels, and so it brings in money that otherwise wouldn't be brought into our city. Thank you for giving this opportunity, and again, I encourage a yes vote.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Bill? Sorry about butchering your name.
Sorry.
The following bill will be Hugh Linebrook, Chad Engelking, and Robert Lacy.
It's Bill Oger, by the way.
Oger.
Yes.
Close-ish.
Sorry. Former two-term Commissioner, Beaches Parks Recreation, member of the G-PAC Committee, along with you, if you recall. I think Councilman Schwartz probably took my position on the Beaches Parks and Recs. I just pulled off a couple of things rather quickly. I think the ordinance that's on the city site, I'd like to read it. It addresses the general plan. And the policies and objectives, this is Table 3 if I'm correct, land use and privacy goals numbers, which states, "Land use, land use plan seeks to retain and enhance established residential neighborhoods, commercial and industrial districts, recreational resource, community-active areas, and amenities, and open access that improve the community's quality of life, enhance the appeal of our many attractions, maintain our small-town character, and ensure long-term environmental and fiscal health," requirement of the general plan. The Planning Commission's response on its consistency finding says, I'm quoting, first word, it's consistent. "The disturbances caused by commercial lodging areas such as STLUs and boarding houses in many residential neighborhoods are a threat to the public health, safety, general welfare, and quiet environment, quiet enjoyment of residential property, and the proposed attachment limits the use of residential property for commercial lodging purposes to a level of impact that maintains compatibility with surrounding residential neighborhoods." So their own finding says it's in conflict with that. For the record, I would like to know if you passed this ordinance tonight, which I'm opposed to, I live on Lobiero, you are going against what we voted for in the general plan. Thank you.
Would it be possible to show the elements in these photos?
Hi, my name is Hugh Linebrook. Been a resident of San Clemente, especially on Montalvo, since 1959. So we've been around for a while. Some of the people in front of me were explaining that they don't think that the short-term rental people would be as loud in partying as much as the people that are renting full-time. That's laughable if it wasn't so serious. That's just ridiculous. When the people show up for their short-term rental, they're loud, obnoxious, ready to party. They got the kids, the dogs, everything, the barbecue running around, as you can see in those photos. But that's just part of this problem. The biggest problem I see for Lobiero and Montalvo is parking. And after living there for all these years, I can tell you, before there was ever one short-term rental allowed, there was been a parking problem. And why, and for what other reason would we, the permanent residents need to have parking passes that they have to buy from the city? We get issued one visitor parking pass and one for each car, and they're hard to get. And that should just raise red flags right there, that we have a parking problem. We have a dog park across the street. People come from Timbuktu to walk their dogs there and park. We have weddings, probably up to three a week. The state park allows for that. They all park, okay? That just sucks up the parking left and right. And then you got your typical beachgoers, surfers, that park up on top to walk down the steps to the beach to avoid paying down there. Okay. Now, with that being said, you don't seem to have the manpower to enforce these parking restrictions, okay? We have the folks come out for your parking detail, maybe, I probably see them there maybe once a month, okay? I mean, we need them there every second of the day to make this thing work. It's just impossible. You're going to create havoc, and you're going to create a lot of tension between owners and the people that are showing up. We don't know who these cars belong to or who these people are living next to us, and it, so it's definitely a problem just as far as the parking's concerned. It's like if you took your planning commissioners and you said, okay, you can all build an R3 right there out of your single-story house, but we don't care if you have the parking or not, you know? It's the same thing. It's, yeah, we promise we won't park out on the street, right? No. I've lived next door to a short-term rental, and it's living hell, okay? And that's it for me tonight. Thanks for listening. I respect you. Thank you.
Chad Engelking, Robert Lacy, Tina Therat, and then James Casano. Are you Robert Lacy?
I'm Robert Lacy.
You're jumping ahead, but we'll take you.
Oh, did I jump ahead?
Chad's taking very nicely, so.
I didn't mean to go out of turn. I gave you an article regarding Airbnb's impact on New York City, and it was done by university, so it's several interesting findings. I think the short-term nature or short-sighted nature of this ordinance to settle a lawsuit looks for problems down the road. It's clearly designed to settle this one lawsuit but doesn't address others who want to join in and rent STLUs, and it doesn't address in detail mitigating factors that you can use to mitigate. Whenever an STLU is put in place, you lose permanent residents. And when you lose permanent residents, it puts pressure on the existing housing stock, and rents go up for existing residents. We have a housing shortage in California. This is going to just exacerbate it in the city. That's fundamentally what's going to happen. I think, when you think about it, you should adopt an ordinance that applies to the whole city, that makes sense for the whole city, that doesn't select certain neighborhoods to be thrown under the bus. If people don't want to have STLUs in Toledo, why would we want them on Montalvo? So if you're going to limit density, the ordinance doesn't limit density the way I read it. It's supposed to be limited to 20%, it's supposed to be 300 square circular. It's not, doesn't do either one. When you look at the way it's worded, there's an unlimited number of STLUs can be on Montalvo and Lobiero. The ordinance is flawed. The enforcement is flawed because we're going to have to attend hearings for enforcement for any noise abatement. I think you need to take the long view. I think you need to consider how you're going to deal with VRBOs and Airbnbs in this city because that's a fact of life. Cities all over the world are dealing with this issue, and this is not going to go away. And the sooner you address it for the whole city, the better, rather than just one spot. Okay? Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir. So this is Chad, then Tina Therat, and then James Casano. Chad. All right. Hey, thank you for allowing me the time. I just wanted to say, and I appreciate Mr. Steele's presentation too, because, oh, sorry about that. I'd like to thank everyone for your time, and I'd like to thank Mr. Steele for his presentation because I think it's going to illustrate the point I'm going to make, is that, as I understand it, the zone that's in question is that which the California Coastal Commission has authority over, and stretches from North Beach, kind of hugs El Camino, close to the 5, kind of cuts under a few homes, and then it goes over to El Camino, to the recently constructed homes, and then it goes down towards the trestles where we walked down there at the end of the Del Presidente. The way, when I look at that, it looks discriminatory to me. And by that, I mean that it disproportionately affects, and I feel in a very negative way, a certain class of resident and homeowner, and those are folks in medium-density residences, without affecting folks in single-family homes. So I would just encourage the City Council to go back, and if we're going to do this, make it fair and equitable for everyone in that zone, and it should cover, it should cover the Loop, it should cover North Beach, it should cover Buena Vista, but it should also cover Riviera, it should also cover some type of shores, it should also cover all the single-family homes near T Street, mixed residential, because the way I look at it now, it affects certain areas, but it seems to me it's built to protect residents in single-family homes who might have the wherewithal to push back against something like this more so than folks who live in these type of homes. Thank you.
My name's Tina Therat. I was born and raised in San Clemente, but I currently reside in Northern California. I still have many friends and relatives here in this wonderful hometown of mine. Several years ago, I inherited my father's house in San Clemente. I decided to rent this property out as a short-term unit so that I could have the flexibility of a place to stay when I travel here several times a year in order to visit family and friends. It's truly wonderful to have the flexibility to stay in a familiar place when I come to visit. Shortly after obtaining my permit from the city, I was informed that the rules for the short-term leasing units were changing, but I would have an additional two years to enjoy this arrangement as long as I applied for a new permit under the new rules, which I did. Later, I was told that the city was making changes to the original ordinance, and part of those changes would include a clause, the STLU owners in good standing, which I am, would be eligible for an additional eight years of non-conforming permits. This was wonderful. I love the flexibility to visit my hometown. My guests love to stay here. I have several repeat guests. They contribute heartily to the tourist economy of San Clemente. My neighbors have not had any issues with my guests, and I have asked them, and I have contributed thousands of dollars to the city via payment of transient occupancy tax. Recently, I was notified that I was not eligible for the additional eight years of amortization because the wording of the ordinance changes now say only non-conforming units in residential medium or residential high-density zoning areas were eligible. My property is zoned residential low. However, I have discovered that there are 19 non-conforming properties that are zoned residential low that the city has chosen to exempt from this ordinance change. No reason was given, that I can tell, part of the settlement, secret. I fail to understand why these owners are being given preferential treatment. I believe the council has a duty and a responsibility to treat all property owners and STLU permit holders fairly, and this preferential treatment simply is not fair. I do thank you for your time.
Will be KK Ceruley, and then Catherine M. Orr, and then Sandy Beeler.
James Casano from San Clemente. I'm here to appeal and call attention to the STLU allowed areas specifically in the Pier Bowl area outlined in Exhibit A, Sheet 4, which is the second slide. My home is located, you can barely see the arrow, it's pointing to it, it's on the corner of Victoria and Elena. I purchased the Pier Bowl property on the 400 block of Victoria within the high-density residential-specific plan boundary with the intention to make it a short-term vacation rental unit. I've become a casualty of the STLU war. The new STLU allowed areas exclude the last five lots at the end of the 400 block of the. top of the street, cutting us out. So we're one of those lots, and because of that, as a result, we're unable to obtain the STLU for, a permit for our property. The city placed signage on the corner of Victoria and Elena that clearly points down towards our home, and it says Pier Bowl on it, and we're inside the area where it says Pier Bowl, so it's pretty much saying the Pier Bowl is from here down, which includes us. Coincidentally, on that same corner of Victoria and Elena is the spot where the city blocks off the road leading down to the Pier Bowl during the Fourth of July. And our property, again, sits inside that blocked road. We experienced the same issues regarding traffic, beach parking, loud parties, and vacation rentals, as the neighbors five doors down from us do, and they're actually in the STLU-allowed area. So I'm appealing to the city to extend the STLU-allowed area in the Pier Bowl to the end of the 400 block of Victoria so we could move forward with our plan to get the STLU permit. Now, I know that's kind of what's being done with the North Beach area and Lobiero Loop, and I'm not sure what it would take to get it done on our block. Thank you for your time.
Sir, do you not have a Star permit, or is that your neighbor that has a Star permit?
I do. I was, so, that was offered to me as an option, but it has its limitations. I have two units. So now I'm not able to do the STLU out of both units, and I'm forced, up until they do the new rules, to live in one of them. So with the limitations there, obviously, it's in my interest to be able to do STLU out of both units. That's always been our plan, actually.
Thank you.
Thank you.
KK?
Yes.
Do you go by KK?
I do go by KK.
Okay. And how do you say your last name?
Cerulli.
Oh, I got it right.
Good job.
Yep.
So, I'd just like to proffer a couple of questions for you to consider when you're making your decision. First is, was this process adequate and fair? Did you inform the residents of the Montalvo-Lobiero Loop as you were moving towards this settlement, this lawsuit settlement? With all due respect, the sign that went up seven days ago in our neighborhood is probably not what I'm referring to. And did you involve the residents in making the concessions that were made in the lawsuit? Did you involve them? Did you consult with them along the way to determine whether there were suggestions they could make that would mitigate the negative aspects of this settlement on our neighborhood? Who did the research to determine that Montalvo-Lobiero would be the ones that were added to this? And I understand that in the Planning Commission memo, that there was a reference that the Vacation Rental Alliance professed that we, on the Montalvo-Lobiero Loop, are historically oriented towards short-term lodging units, and I'm not sure that's true. I think a lot of us would disagree with that, you know, with that. And the second question that I ask you to keep in mind as you're making your decision is, how would the rest of the city feel about this process and the results of the process? I know we're just a small group there. However, and if you drove our neighborhood, you might say, hmm, you might not understand that this is a long-established neighborhood with a lot of residents who communicate and care for each other. We're a neighborhood like any other neighborhood in San Clemente. We have a Fourth of July parade. 200 people show up. We ride our bikes, we march, we line the route, and then we go to the park and we have potluck lunch afterwards. We have seasonal potluck lunches. If you go to our park any afternoon in the late afternoon, there's going to be a gathering of neighbors, you're going to meet old friends, share stories, share news. So we are the same as every other neighborhood in San Clemente. And I think that neighborhoods in San Clemente have a history of banding together to protect each other. We helped with derail the trail, we helped with stop the toll road. So I think that many neighborhoods in San Clemente would be surprised to know how this process worked and how we were selected to be the ones. So I ask you to consider both of those questions when you're making your vote.
Catherine, I'm following Catherine Lee, Sandy Beeler, and then Judy Rowe.
Hi there. First off, I'd like to say thank you very much for your service, and I'm glad I'm here and not there. My name is Sandy Beeler. I own a triplex on Avenida Montalvo. I have been a resident of San Clemente for close to 20 years. My summer college jobs were at the state park, so I've been around for a long time. I'm also an avid Airbnb and VRBO user, mostly in the Atlanta area. I have family, I visit there. But I also have rented internationally. Airbnb and other internet-based vacation rental services represent a global shift in how we travel. It's not going away, and we need to deal with it now, how it's going to affect our entire community. I'd like you to consider some recommendations I have, some thoughts I have, when you make your decision-making process, when you follow it. Our city should draft a very strong ordinance, which is well-thought-out and includes the following measures. The entire city should be open to vacation rentals with no bias as to which neighborhoods are zoned for vacation use. No individual neighborhood should be burdened by a concentration of short-term rentals when other neighborhoods are not. Vacation rentals, both STLU's and Stars, should be treated the same with density regulations. All vacation rentals should be licensed, permitted, and taxed, with revenues designated to a special fund, which would pay for enforcement of our ordinances. All rentals should be inspected. These vacation rentals are businesses, therefore they should be held to the same standards as any other business in San Clemente. They should be inspected for safety, fire, and building codes, as well as ADA compliance. I don't believe Airbnb does this for us. The city needs to do it for us. Personally, I've stayed in unsafe Airbnb rentals. I will not go there again. Parking mitigation should be provided for in the ordinance for any heavily impacted areas. Finally, 24/7 dedicated city enforcement dealing with nuisances, issues including noise, trash, and indecent behavior should be dealt with. Thank you.
Catherine, then Judy Rowe, then Jim Dahl.
Good afternoon, Your Honorable Counsel. My name is Catherine Oger. I live on 221 Avenida Lobiero. These are my neighbors. I've been, we've been, Bill and I have been on the Loop for about 24 years. I am going to attack this at a different, from a different perspective. I understand and I agree with everything all the opposers are saying. What I don't, what I just learned today from this gentleman on the Planning Commission was that this is part of a settlement from a lawsuit whereby a judge, and I'm an attorney, so I've been in lots of settlement conferences, okay, how can we settle this? How can we get it off our table? Well, we just got the raw end of the deal. You added Lobiero and you added Buena Vista to give the plaintiffs what I call a bone, a throw them a bone, without any obvious, like I say, traveling the neighborhood, seeing what's going on, no input, no information to us, just, it's just there all of a sudden, without understanding any of the consequences. So while you're making your decision, I would really appreciate it if each and every one of you put yourself in our place. What about us? Would you want this? Would you want this? Would you want this? I don't think you would, especially when we get thrown under the bus from this lawsuit where we had not, we had no idea, we had no input, nothing. And I honestly, Bill and I have lived next door to a STLU, and I can tell you right now, it's a nightmare. Twice, three times maybe. So this is nothing, something you want to take lightly. Forget the parking, don't forget it, but consider the parking, consider the noise, consider the amount of homes and apartments on Lobiero. Everybody's funneling down to the beach, and that's a good thing, we all love it. But we were not involved. We should have been involved, and this is not a good process. Thank you.
Next up's Judy, Jim, and then Rick Rowe.
So this is an emotional subject, obviously, and especially it is to me right now, so I'm going to read this because I don't want to get too emotional. So my name is Judy Rowe, and my husband and I live at, on Montalvo. We lived there for 16 years. We specifically bought this home because we wanted to be near the water, but also wanted to live in a residential neighborhood. We ruled out the Pier Bowl area because it was too congested and commercialized. We just didn't want our family in that. So as parents of four and grandparents of eight, we wanted a neighborhood that would work with our lifestyle. Our family enjoys typical family brunches, lunches, and dinners, just like all the few. We knew parking would be an issue, but we thought we can deal with that because the neighborhood had everything else we wanted. The current proposal you are considering would dramatically reduce our quality of life. The parking is already very difficult, and I think this would make it unbearable. And right now, we have a pretty peaceful neighborhood because we all coexist, but you bring in all these strangers randomly, week by week, and I think we're going to have, it won't be a peaceful neighborhood, and that really makes me sad. So we didn't buy our home in an area with no restrictions on Stars and with no policies on STLU's. We bought our home in a residential neighborhood with the same restrictions as all the other residential neighborhoods. That's what we bought, and that's what we want. We bought our home in good faith, we pay our taxes in good faith, we pay utilities, we voted in all the city elections in good faith, expecting city council members to represent us as San Clemente residents. That is what we expect. The current proposal does not support the wishes of a huge group of San Clemente residents whom you agree to represent by accepting a seat on the city council. We are not asking to be treated better than the other San Clemente residents living in residential neighborhoods. We simply want to be treated equally. In closing, I want to share a couple of things I learned during my career. I was vice president of human resources for three companies. Two things I learned to be true over the years that apply to this current situation. One, preparation is key. You never start into a change until you have the comprehensive plan that addresses all possible consequences. Two, involving those who will be impacted by the change makes all the difference in the world. You receive valuable input from those who live in that environment, and you get buy-in for the solution because they were part of the, part of the solution, their voice was heard. From my perspective, you have not prepared an effective plan for all the logistics and safety issues that will arise on the Loop, and you have not included residents who are opposed to the proposal, who live on the Loop, to be part of the solution. It is far more difficult to undo or correct a flawed plan than to spend the appropriate time upfront and do it right the first time. I wasn't going to speak tonight because I am very emotional, and I've talked to you guys once before. In November, I went to the Planning Commission meeting, so this is my third time, but I decided if you really care about something, you have to speak up. So I'm here just to say, my third time, I really don't think this plan is put together well, and I ask you, please step back from this position, this proposal, and get residents involved in finding a solution that's fair and equitable for everyone, and show that you do represent all of us, all San Clemente residents, including us. So everyone from the Loop who agrees with me, please raise your hand. All right, thank you for your time.
Jim? Jim, then Rick, then Susan Corman.
Hi. Hi, good evening. Disappointed to not see the whole council here tonight. And also, the time of the day, a lot of folks weren't able to attend. In all my years on the city council, I never saw an instance or participated in a situation that a court decision was made and literally without any public hearing beforehand, and then turned into an ordinance and a decision to be made tonight. I'm very disappointed in that. It seems to me that the Loop has been picked out as a token to the Vacation Rental Alliance, and also Buena Vista. And we have a tremendous parking, as everybody said, we have a tremendous parking problem on Montalvo. And by the way, the parking permit system we have right now was never even reviewed by the California Coastal Commission in the first place. We're the only parking permit system in the city that actually has to pay for a parking permit. Broadmoor doesn't have to, they get theirs for free. So I'm really disappointed in the fact that the process is what it is, and I think that a full council should be able to hear this. Also, it seems to me that coastal commission decisions are usually made in the coastal zone as a visitor-serving situations or visitor-serving services. It appears that we've been singled out, Buena Vista's been singled out. Why didn't the whole coastal zone get included in this? I know that Capistrano Shores Trailer Park has some very expensive vacation rentals in there that we don't really know about, but do exist under the table. So parking situation's going to be terrible on our street, as terrible as it is right now. Our RSVPs are, have been working it again, thankfully, in the last couple of months. They've sort of abandoned us for the last year and a half or so. So I wish that you'd reconsider this whole program, come back, have more public hearings, have a full council to make the decision, and don't let the court drive your decisions. Thank you.
My name is Rick Rowe, and I've lived at 268 Avenida Montalvo for over 16 years. Facts are important, and so I put together a fact sheet, which has been presented several times, but we request the city to look at some more key facts about the Loop. There's 98 addresses with roughly a similar number of buildings, which is rough, of which roughly 73 have four units. About 150 unmarked parking spaces, two hours open to public, but with special passes for residents, mostly for our visitors. 405 were issued in 2017 to compete for the 150 spots. You started off last year at least requiring the STLU's to provide basic onsite parking and limited the number of guests. And it was clear to us your 20% rule would include the allowing of 80 short-term rentals on the Loop, which would include both STU's and Stars, not to exceed. Next slide, please. Despite all the concerns expressed at various public meetings by residents, you have chosen to throw out any STLU parking requirements onsite, you've added more allowed guests, and now we find the 80 max for the Loop only applies to STLU's. And apparently, the number of Stars is unlimited, and you have even thrown out 300-foot Star spacing requirement. With this ordinance as written, you are going to legally allow for roughly 359 short-term rentals on the Loop. Is that your intent? To by ordinance convert a residential neighborhood into a resort? If this is not your intent, you truly have a defective ordinance before you that if you pass it as it is, it is unlikely you'll ever be able to correct it. What is the rush? This ordinance needs more work and our input for it to be fair to the residents of the residential neighborhoods affected. Three, please. Despite presenting a petition that represented half of the residential addresses against STLU's in the Loop, but accepting Stars with 300-foot restrictions, the city still has chosen to not formally involve people who actually live in these areas, and that erodes trust in you and your processes. These are not visitor-serving areas per your own master plan. Next slide, please. Please take a look at the Loop. It is a very, very dense area of pure residential in a very small space. Any event that occurs in one of those areas can affect a large number of residents. Slide five. Limiting both Stars with a 300-foot limit in STLU's for the 80 total, that's not what we would prefer, but even if you fix this part, we will probably end up with 50 STU's and 30 Star short-term rentals in our neighborhood. We can probably learn to live with that if you will let us mitigate concerns such as parking issues and ensure the rules are enforced. And Stars and STU's need to provide basic onsite parking since they are acting as short-term residents. Every one of us does that, why not them? Finally, please amend this ordinance to assure no more than 80 STU's and Stars with 300-foot separation for the Loop and whatever Buena Vista needs. Thank you very much.
Susan Corman, Jennifer Harris, and then Olga Resnick.
Hello. I'm Susan Corman, and I am an owner of a multifamily dwelling on the 200 block of Avenida Cabrillo. I am also a resident of San Clemente, and I wanted to talk to you about my block. My block has two zones. It is zoned for multi-use and also medium density. And in spite of those two zones, the block juts up against a variety of store And in spite of those two zones, the block juts up against a variety of stores, restaurants, the community center, the library, and multiple parking lots. And so what I'm here to do today is to ask the council if you will consider allowing me to continue operating my existing STLU in the same way that others on my block would be permitted to do. Thank you.
Jennifer Harris, Olga, and then Beth Dudis.
Hi, Jennifer Harris. I live at 315 Avenida Monterey and I am in favor of extending the, the extension for the multi-density. I have a vacation rental, I live onsite, I've never had any problems with the families that come stay at my property. Thank you.
Calling Olga is Beth Dudis, and then Steve Sargent.
Okay, I'm a San Clemente resident since 2008 and I bought that house, vacation rental, when it was like downmarket and it was like in distress. And it's in low-density zone, Laventana Street. I was excluded from the extension for eight years amortization settlement and I just wondering, I was, I had never, I had never, I never had any complaints from the neighbors, from the neighbors about vacationing people. It was always families that were on the beach all the time or going to attractions. But when, during that last five years, once the property was rented for long-term tenants for one year and another occasion for six months, then I got complaints because those people were playing loud video games, they were smoking, they had dogs and they, I mean, they told me the dogs don't bark, no, it wasn't true. So that was really disturbing my, my neighbors. And they said, well, we were so happy with the vacationing people because it was like one week and vacationing people that never there and it was like one week is empty. It was more quality of life for my neighbors. Also, last, last fall, I was trying to rent it long-term and I couldn't like do it for four months because house needs updating and vacationing people, they don't mind. Right now, I have three families waiting for my answer. What's going on with the situation? They want to come back and stay in the house. And I really think it's really unfair to me because somehow, high-density areas were included and low-density excluded and it should be the opposite because we have a lot of parking on our street, it can accommodate a wedding. And it's really spacious distance between the neighbors, so it's a lot of privacy. I just don't get it. Why, I mean, like condos can accommodate those vacationing people and low-density are not. So I have a question. How can I apply for the extension on B in this particular program for the next eight years? Like question, this is a question. Anybody can answer? What can I do about it? Nothing? Nothing?
You can't, ma'am.
I see. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Beth Dudis, and then the last card is Steve Sargent.
I'm amazing.
Beth?
Okay.
Yeah?
I'm a little bit different. I don't live in any of those areas and I've been rezoned out in a casualty situation. I've been a real estate agent for 40 years and I have marketed vacation rentals in Hawaii and Mammoth for 12 years. I have had the permit to rent my home, vacation rental at the old permit, the new permit, never had any complaints whatsoever and was very happy with the way, I agree, there are problems with STLUs that are not owner-directed, taken care of, and are just flying online. I get it. But for those who have been very careful, that follow the rules, that only allowed two cars, who never allowed events, had agreements, we're really being hurt. And the people coming in from out of the other areas are being hurt because they and the businesses here are being hurt. I loved the first thing you did, the ban, I thought it was great. I thought enforcing everything was great because I didn't like the other either, was giving us a bad name, for those who are doing it right. I bought my home, I've been in San Clemente over 30 years. I bought the home that I'm in 16 years ago. I've had the permits all this time and never had a problem. And when I bought the home, being a real estate agent and being an STLU manager in other states, I looked at the seats here and ours, I looked at the title and I made sure that there was no limitation before I bought it. Because I knew someday I was going to retire, which I did 10 years ago, on social security. My taxes are $24,000 a year and my social security is $1,500 a month. And so we were vacation, living in our home, saving it, and vacation-rentaling our home only 16 weeks a year. Why doesn't the city consider the hardship cases where other cities have done that and they limit it to 60 days a year, 90 days a year, so people can save their homes, which is very, very important? Also, you're bringing in a different class of people if you're just putting them into the low-density. Completely different class of people that don't go to the restaurants and spend a lot of money, go to the stores, spend a lot of money. And this rule of, that I got in the mail of, hey, if you have a hardship, pay $3,500, give us your tax returns, and oh, by the way, you won't get it back if we don't approve it, doesn't sound like a good hardship case. So I think you should reconsider that.
Thank you, ma'am. Following Steve Sargent was Jim Rulin. Are you going to speak, Jim, or Steve?
Uh...
You decided to.
Real briefly. Thank you. My name's Steve Sargent. I own a house at 224 Caia Primavera. Bought the house in '07. Original intent was to rent it out until I retired. That may be a while. We decided to turn it into a STLU some years back and it's been great. We've met people from all over the world, truly, and it's been a good thing. We try to only rent it out as much as we need to pay the bills. That's about it. To my knowledge, we haven't had any complaints. We have a property manager that follows up with any of the needs of the tenants and all that, so we don't live there. We live in Lake Forest, but we spend a lot of time down here. I think one thing that is clear is the economic impact that people on vacation spend a lot of money. We just booked a trip to Ireland and we're staying straight in VRBO and Airbnb properties. So, and we'll be spending money there. So I think it's a great thing. We do pay the TOT tax, we, you know, play by the rules and that's all I can say. I appreciate your consideration. You're in a really tough seat there, so I appreciate you being there. Thanks.
Thanks, sir. So we got Jim Rulin, Amber Sheeky, Tiffany Casano, Wayne Aggleston, Edith Radnoff, and Dan Bain. Before we let Mr. Rulin speak, if anybody would like to turn a card, this is your last opportunity to do so. We're shutting you down.
He had it for three hours and now he turned it, Joe?
Anybody want to raise their hand that is going to turn in a card before I close this? Okay, come on up. We're taking now. And we're cutting it out. Steve want to cut Dan out? I said, no, we've got to let Dan speak.
I tried to block him.
Any more? No more hands? Oh, I got two more hands. Okay.
And just so you know, we're going to mix them all up so if you waited to be the last person to talk, it's not going to happen. So we're going to do it.
Thanks, Jim, for your patience.
No problem.
Okay, this is the last card? I see a gentleman back filling out a card, but he might be here for the meeting that starts in two minutes, so. Steve, you want to tap on that gentleman's shoulder and see if he's trying to turn in a card there? Mr. Sargent?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's the last card, I don't see any other hands. Thank you for your patience, folks.
Bring it up. Bring up the card. There you go.
It's officially closed and he gets to the front. That's it? Okay.
No running out in the parking lot now for more people.
Okay. Final card. Thank you, folks. Okay, Mr. Rulin, thanks for your patience.
Thank you, Jim Rulin, planning commissioner, only speaking for myself tonight. 19-year resident of Buena Vista, here in San Clemente. I listened to some of the vacation rental owners talk about Buena Vista and it sounds like they're describing a residential hellscape that only vacation rentals can cure. But, you know, I've lived there, there's, yeah, there's a lot of apartments there, the building next door to me is an apartment. But the people who live closest to me, they aren't transients or anything like that. One guy's lived there for five years, a couple's lived there for eight years. They're my neighbors, we talk, you know, over the garden, we, you know, we, you know, look out for each other, we see things that have changed, just like in every residential neighborhood, and I'm sure like yours. In fact, my neighbor, a few years ago, someone threw a cigarette butt in our backyard. My neighbor saw something out of the ordinary, took a look at it, realized, hey, there's a fire going on here, got it out before it got about eight feet wide. He may have saved all of our homes. That's what neighbors do. There's, I know that there's a complaint or an observation that, hey, and vacation rentals are noisy, so are residential places. And yeah, there's an apartment below us, they get a little noisy, the way that, they've got a, they've got a, an internal courtyard and sound echoes up. But every few years, we go down there, we post a letter, a nice letter in their laundry room, just, you know, reminding them that there's neighbors around and everyone's windows are open in the summer, if they could just keep us in mind. And it makes a difference. They get quieter, they still have fun and that sort of thing, but they're attentive to the neighbors. There's a neighborhood quality and that's it. It's something that we don't talk much about when we get into these objective things like parking standards and stuff like that. But there is something about living in a neighborhood and that has it. And every unit that you take away from that and turn into a vacation rental, into essentially a business, takes away from that neighborliness, the safety of people watching out for each other, you know, things like that. There's a lot more I could say about that, but there's a lot of other things to talk about. I will say that no one that I spoke to on my street felt like they were moving into a visitor-serving area. They didn't feel like it was some perfect visitor-serving paradise. I also need to mention that, again, the staff report that was presented tonight is, is, is still incorrect. I worked the numbers, I spent a couple of days working it out, I, I published, I spoke to staff about the number breakdown and they agreed with me in terms of how you do these numbers, you have to look at what each building is. Is it a condo? Is it an apartment? And, you know, turned out like that, there are, there's a very high density that you're, that you're looking at right now. And that needs to come way, way, way down. And if you allow any vacation rentals, you have to look at mitigation. It's incumbent on you to look at that because this is an incompatible use. It says so right in the zoning ordinance. So what mitigations are we going to be doing? And we might need to get creative about it, but, you know, I have ideas, other people have ideas, and I think we can mitigate it to the point where, where we can work together. Thank you.
We have Amber Sheeky, Tiffany Casano, and then Wayne Aggleston.
So, I'm not good at public speaking, so excuse me. Our family found out that they're trying to take away our vacation rental yesterday, so we didn't know. I'm going to school to be a firefighter and paying for that rental home is paying for my school. So if we sell our home, it's going to be really hard for our family and kind of our expenses, so to go for the vacation rentals that's helping our family.
Tiffany Casano, and then Wayne Aggleston, and then Edith Radnoff.
So along that note, I just wanted to address something. Our family's been in this community and owned restaurant in this community for over 30 years. My mother-in-law, I'm sorry, has had her retirement taken away from her once by losing, by a building owner that didn't live here. And we picked up and we started over again and all of a sudden, when all the stuff came up about the sober living facilities in the STLUs, she hit retirement age and we were ready to do the plan, which was always in place. Clearly, we live in the Pier Bowl. There's nobody here, I don't think one person, that's disputing that the Pier Bowl is tourism. The line does not go to the end of the block and it cuts our house out again. Retirement taken out from underneath her. We are fighters and I'm here to fight for the right that we have as property owners. We work our asses off. And all we want to do is be able to retire comfortably and let her retire comfortably. And I am asking for your help on this because we are definitely casualties of somebody else's war. And I just wanted to say that to you. Thank you.
Wayne, Edith, and Dan Bain, then Joe Janis.
Wayne Aggleston, San Clemente resident, former mayor. I was on the council for 12 years. I don't think I've ever had opportunity to agree with Jim Dahl tonight, but I'm agreeing with Jim Dahl. I'm talking about two issues tonight. This settlement process is terribly flawed. No resident was involved in this. What happened to resident first? I don't know what happened to that. Is it just a slogan out there? I can't believe it. That city negotiator negotiated with four people who signed this agreement and they, and then, and then a total of 19 people were involved in this in the, in the single-family neighborhoods. Forty of, 40% of which don't even use that as their primary residence. They live in Texas, Seattle, who knows? But it's a terribly flawed process and this affects hundreds of people in the, in the single-family neighborhoods out there. And they were never involved in this process at all. North Beach and the, and the Loop. Again, these people were not involved in this process. It was negotiated, but never involved. One thing, when I was on the council, when in fact, we had a legal issue, a settlement issue in closed session behind doors and it involved an ordinance, a change in an ordinance, guess what? We brought it out to the sunlight and the sunshine of the day. That was never done here as far as, as far as bringing it out and debating it with the residents here in the community. I don't know if it's legal or not, but it's certainly not appropriate. This is, this is a flawed, flawed settlement agreement and it needs to go back. You just can't wave a magic wand and say, we're going to have permit parking and you haven't even implemented or even thought about it in, in the North Beach area. I just can't believe this. This is, this is something that is so inappropriate and I'm, I'm, I can't believe that we have negotiators out there who are negotiating without resident involvement. Residents come first.
Thanks, Wayne. Yeah. Edith, Dan Bain, then Joe Janis.
Hello. So my daughter is Amber and I had no idea how things were impacting her, but the fact is if the ordinance doesn't pass, we do have to sell our home. And it's the only home she's ever known, so I, so my statement is simple, please pass the ordinance. I think it's a good compromise. Thank you.
Dan, Joe, and then Brad Endel.
Thank you, Dan Bain, city resident. Sorry, I'm a little late. That's why my card got put in late. I was at work today, so Steve, I apologize in advance for this, but look, I'm an attorney, I understand that things happen in settlement. I think the toll road's a good example of sometimes things happen in settlements that maybe they should have pumped the brakes and I think this is one of those circumstances. One of the concerns that I have in the understanding of our codes, the way that they're supposed to work together is with the STLUs and the other component was the sober living home. And a concern that I have is if those are tied together and we have a settlement, we're exempting 19 people as part of a settlement, are the sober living homes not going to come back and say that they should be exempted as well lest there be some sort of a discrimination issue? So I agree with the folks that maybe we should step back, take more time to look So, I agree with the folks that maybe we should step back, take more time to look at all of those issues, to make sure that there aren't going to be, you know, further challenges to our ordinance. And is this opening up some sort of a Pandora's Box as it relates to sober living homes that we can't shut the door on? So I would hate to see that this ordinance gets completely invalidated if we start making spot exceptions for folks as part of litigation. So, I don't envy your decision. I know that Scott's probably put a lot of time into this, but I think it'd be prudent, given the circumstances, to step back and take more time to make sure that we're not opening ourselves up to further challenges. Thanks.
Joe, Brad, and then Tricia Madding. Hey, Joe.
Joe Janis. You know, we went up to Cambria. The members of the Alliance had talked to the Coastal Commission. They were in ex parte, and, and they kind of had a lot to do with this agreement. So we went up to the, in Cambria, and had the Coastal Commission meeting, and we didn't get the idea at all that we needed to put in Lobiero, Montavo, Loop, and Buena Vista to get this thing settled. If you look at those two areas, the only reason they're in there is because members of the Alliance have special interest in that area. So, now, I, I reserve the right to be wrong, but we have one or two people that are in these areas, and we have a lot of people that showed up. So that's what I want to say tonight.
How timely, after you said "special interest."
I'm sorry, say it again.
I said, how timely, after Joe was just talking about special interest.
Yeah.
Tricia, then Ed, Diwaraana, and then David Friedman.
Bradley Dendel. Vacation rentals have been a vital part in the development in present-day economies of just about every beach town in Southern California over a hundred years, including San Clemente. We are one of those towns. We can't deny it. It's been two years since the STLU ordinances and the results are in with impressive track record that demonstrates that vacation rentals do not create the negative impact that was feared. As expected, there have been few troubled properties that were thankfully eliminated. With the vast majority of rentals as good operators, it's time for the demonization of vacation rentals to stop. However, this unfair demonization continues to misinform and create fear and anger in this community. Vacation rental myths, excess noise. As the city has shown, through two years of enforcement, there has been less than a dozen noise violations. How many were counted with long-term renters? I would like to know. Parking issues. This claim flies against these, against three facts. The first being that most people travel together in one car, as opposed to a minimum of two to three cars that are used by permanent residents. Also, studies done across the U.S. irrefutably confirm that vacation rentals bring fewer cars than residents. Also, vacation rentals are expected, expecting parking, and do not want to fight for parking on the street. Conversion. There are twenty-six thousand dwelling units and only about two hundred active vacation rentals in the town. That means there are less than one percent of the dwelling units that are being rented part-time. That is statistically insignificant to help housing stock. Many of those properties would never be rented. Starting and running vacation rentals is expensive, not easy to do, when there are counting on consistent long-term rental income. There's also so much demand, there are only so much demand for vacation rentals in any given town. The conversations about Montavo changing into an overrun vacation rental area is not founded in fact, as there have been decades and decades of opportunity to have vacation rentals, and there are now only six in the area. And by the way, there is not one property that is managed or operated by anybody from the San Clemente Vacation Rental Alliance in Montavo Loop. I encourage this council to positively support these important housing options for visitors to our fine city by passing this vacation rental ordinance today. Thank you very much.
Tricia Madding? There we go.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm concerned with the amortization clause that stated in the revised ordinance. While the ordinance states that the purpose of the amortization clause is to prevent a taking, I'm concerned with the factors that have been listed by the city that the hearing officer is to consider. The purpose of a taking is to prevent a property owner from having, to prevent him from having a loss when there is a change of use to his property. Their future profit is not a factor to be considered in determining a proper amortization period. However, in the clause that you have, in the factors that you have listed, you've listed, quote-unquote, the owner's expectations at the time he purchased the property. Even if it was relevant, you don't even say reasonable. You could buy the property and say, well, I thought I was going to make five-hundred percent a year forever. Okay, guess what? I get to keep renting it until my expectations are met, which is ridiculous. So I think that that needs to be changed. And in addition, before that clause comes up, you need a comma. Okay. Then... The goal, the goal of amortization is to try to make the property owner whole. Look, what the courts and the cities look at is the price paid for the property, and then the value today if it were as a conforming use. Then you take that value. And as we all know, with the value in San Clemente, not very many people will have lost money if they rent it long-term or sell it. Two, you also, and then what you do is you look at, how much money will it take them to move their business someplace else? And that's where you come up with the how period of time. And then you look at, how much is it going to cost him to move? And those are factors you consider. Now, the courts have never said that property owners are to be made whole, that they won't end up losing money with the change. That's just part of being a citizen of society. And one of the factors the courts consider when the property owner is not made whole is they look at the factors, they look at the health, welfare, and safety of their neighbors by the non-conforming use. That is not a factor that you have stated, and I believe it's imperative that it be put in there, that the hearing officer realize that, one, the owner's expectations are not to be considered, because it's irrelevant, and, two, that the account, that the court officer is to look at, what, how, how are the neighbors harmed versus how much money will this guy lose? Okay? Thank you.
Ed, and then the last card is Dave Friedman.
Thank you. The previous speaker brought up a very interesting point about takings, and I happen to be an attorney, so I know a little bit about this subject. And the one thing she leaves out is that essentially what City of San Clemente has done is done a retroactive zoning. They have changed the zoning expectations of people, property owners, who came in thinking they were going to be able to buy a home with no restrictions and impose those restrictions. That is a taking. And when you have a taking, if you're going to have a full hearing for everyone to make their argument about their own particular home, one of the things the city has to have a burden is to show a public reason or purpose. Now, there's been a lot of discussion about the purpose and reason for what is happening today about the STLUs. I happen to be a homeowner in San Clemente, and I happen to have a vacation rental. I wouldn't even be here if it wouldn't be for my opportunity to have a vacation rental. That's how I got turned on to San Clemente. That's why I'm here, and I personally manage my vacation rental to help with my daughter's future education and for their ability to stay in the area. So basically, what the argument is, is we don't like people who live here less than thirty days. We only like people who live here thirty-one days and more. Ask yourselves, why is that? What, what possible reason could there be to divide people up into thirty-one-day renters and twenty-nine-day renters? Because that's really what this is about, right? I mean, this is about politics. Okay, let me, let me finish. This is about politics.
Fox, please let him speak. I know he's peeking at you, but...
Because the twenty-nine-day renter, a twenty-nine-day renter doesn't have the vested interest that a thirty-one-day renter does. But really, what the city should be doing is regulating behavior. If people don't behave properly, and they're there twenty-seven days, zoning has to come in, the ordinances have to come in, everything has to be into place. If they're there thirty-two days, same result. The reason we're having so much controversy is because the city is regulating status and not regulating behavior. And they're calling it behavior, but it's not. My understanding is that the number of complaints that there have been on STLUs are minimal, de minimis to nothing. In fact, one study that I saw was that most of them came from the hotel down the street, which was a hotel, and they, they threw it in at an STLU, and they said, oh, the complaints are coming from there. Look how many complaints. You take that out of the equation, very little. I live on a block with two short-term rentals, never see a problem. And that's not with the block where I have my short-term rental, by the way. So I think that it's much to do about nothing, because if we really want to regulate behavior, there are mechanisms built into the law for it. But if you're going to basically antagonize homeowners that have vested expectations under the law when they purchase a home, and you take away those expectations, you're going to invite litigation, which is where we are now. So what do we have in litigation? We have a settlement agreement. Well, there's a reason that there's a settlement agreement. There's a reason it's been recommended. Attorneys read it. They recommended it to the planning commission. The planning commission approved it. Why? Because it's a compromise, everyone. It's a compromise. Nothing's going to be perfect. But one thing I can tell you is if this compromise doesn't go through, the litigation is never going to stop.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
And our last speaker this evening, David Friedman.
Hi. My name is David Friedman. I'm a resident of San Clemente for nineteen years. I'm here for the short-term rentals and the hassle it creates. When I say short-term, we have one across the street. Three days is a common rental. And it's supposed to be maximum of twelve people and four vehicles, and commonly, that's way over that. Two weekends ago, or maybe ten days ago, they had a wedding there. They had catering trucks there. They had delivery service of rental stuff. And it's just the amount of people that come and go. And in our property, when we bought it, it was mentioned in the CCNRs, "single-family home only." I'm not an attorney, I'm just a person. Thank you for your time, and give it consideration.
Thank you, sir. We're going to take a quick five-minute recess after the two hours of public comment, and then, before that, I'm going to close the public hearing, though. Thank you, everybody, for your comments, and then we'll get back and we'll talk about this issue. For those of you that came in late, this is still a separate meeting we're conducting before the Public Safety Task Force meeting that starts at six, which will be starting promptly at seven. probably promptly at 7:00. Folks, if I can, everybody calm down for a minute. So if you guys could bear with me for one minute, this is going to get very convoluted. We had a back-to-back meeting scheduled for today in the council chambers. The meeting we've been having, obviously, started at 4:00. And then we have a Public Safety Task Force starting at 6:00 that Steve and I are part of. So what I'm going to do here is I'm going to end this meeting briefly, and then I'm going to start the meeting for the Public Safety Task Force, and I'm going to delay it until 6:45, and then we're going to reconvene this meeting. So it's going to sound very funky, but that's what's going to happen.
Funky?
Funky?
Yeah.
Really? Oh. So that being said, I'm going to postpone.
No, I'll do it.
No, I'm going to postpone the current meeting for five, three minutes. I'm looking for a second.
Do you need a second?
Yeah. Okay, so motion by Hamm, second by Ward. All's in favor?
Aye.
Pass is 3-0-2. And then I'm going to convene the Public Safety Task Force meeting 10 minutes late at 6:10. I'll have to make sure that Steve and I are here for that. And we are going to postpone the Public Safety Task Force meeting until 6:45 this evening. So if you folks could just kindly step out for a minute, or if you'd like to sit and enjoy that as well, too, but please just sit quietly while we finish the meeting. We're going to go back to in about 30 seconds. So everybody here who's for the Public Safety Task Force meeting, it'll be starting at 6:45. Everyone who's been here, just stay in your seats, and we're going to go back to our meeting shortly. So we'll just let those people exit. Perfect. Thank you. And with that, I will postpone, I'll move to postpone the Public Safety Task Force meeting until 6:45. Okay, we're good with that? Okay. I'm going to reconvene the initial hearing. Yeah, special meeting. Seconded by Steve Schwartz. All's in favor?
Aye.
Pass is 3-0. My apologies, folks. Okay. So with that, before we get into answering some questions, I just want to say thank you to everybody who spoke this evening and everybody who didn't speak. It was very well-handled on your parts, people that were for it and people that are against on both sides. This is a very tumultuous issue, and I appreciate the respect that you guys showed to each other throughout this process. With that said, staff, I got a couple of questions that I'd like to address with you that came up during the public comment. The first one is our parking requirements. So initially, we had parking requirements. Why did we eliminate the parking requirements?
The parking requirements in the old ordinance were tied to the occupancy of the units. That's been removed as part of the amendments. So parking would still be required, whatever the parking is that's required as part of the dwelling unit when the dwelling unit was built would still be there, and that would still be the parking that would be required to be available for the STLU.
Okay. Along those lines, someone asked, can't you hold them to the standard that we hold a business to because they are indeed a business? Is that legal?
I defer legal questions to legal counsel.
Great answer, by the way.
No. And...
You can speak a little louder on that one. Say, "No."
Just "no," is that simple enough?
Yeah.
Yeah, the judge magistrate that looked at this case for the judge who's hearing it caught upon the parking requirement and thought that the ordinance was flawed in that, in this respect. And this was a very preliminary look at it. But his view was that it was impossible to tell who was parking for purposes of going to, when someone's going to the dry cleaners, it's easy to tell. When someone's going to a residential home for the evening or to sleep over, oops, I fell asleep on the couch and now it's morning, it was just vague and too hard for us to enforce. And as a matter of practice, it was. When we thought about it and thought about how you would really enforce that, it had been really problematic to have it on the books and not be able to discern in the street who's coming, who's going, for how long, to residential houses. The judge also thought, he didn't think it was illegal, but he thought it was unfair that you could have a big family or several roommates occupying a house with five bedrooms and five cars and not provide that same benefit to the owner of an STLU. If there's five bedrooms and five people living in it, why would they have zero parking? By the way, we're talking about parking on public streets. Why wouldn't they have an equal right to that public asset, just like the people or the large family across the street with a lot of residents for more than 30 days over there?
Okay. Let's see, what was another question here? Okay, those are standards of business. Well, someone mentioned legal expectations in terms of future expectations for a business. Did we address that, and why was that addressed?
Yeah, so part of the, that reference is to the amortization clause, which is, by the way, far more aggressive than the amortization for other uses in your code. This is a two-year amortization period to be altered in some zones, but in compared to all the other uses that are phased out in your zoning code, which have no amortization period, they just have to be, they have to be terminated when they cease voluntarily. So it's a, it's a pretty aggressive amortization. To do that, you have to have a test that looks at stranded capital, so to speak, and what the U.S. Supreme Court calls the owner's investment-backed expectation. And so part of what's before you was to flesh that out. The test for looking at that stranded capital with an application to extend amortization is much more thorough here, and the ordinance contemplates that implementing regulations will be brought back to the city council before this ordinance goes into effect. And we have that prepared for you. We've vetted a couple of alternatives with the city council, and it opted to go with what we call the long-form amortization request. So it actually requires an analysis. People were making fun of it earlier, and maybe, maybe it's worth making fun of, but it looks at your anticipated tax return when you invested capital in improvements unique to a rental property and allows you to recoup those. If someone submits that application, and that's proven to be something that's worth more than two years, then an extension would have to be required. The Fifth Amendment requires that, but what this ordinance done, does is flushes that out, including the factors that were mentioned during the hearing, with a lot more detail than previously. So in many respects, it's stricter than what was before, which just contained no specific processes or measure for stranded capital.
Do you got a question on that?
Just on that one point. Scott, I know you're going to bring those implementing regulations back to us, but when you do that, can you, we consider Tricia's, Madine's concerns that she stated, and also in that include the damages to the neighborhood and any other conditions that we would have to...
Yes, Ms. Madine's rights. Sorry to cut you off, council member. That, that's part of the balance. Some of that is referenced in this ordinance with regard to STLU's in good standing. If you're not in good standing, you can't even play or think about an amortization extension. But that element of it, if, if she's not noticed that those are interwoven, then doing that in this implementing resolution, resolution would be something that we can definitely do, and, and I understand her point and yours.
Okay.
Okay. Before, thanks, Scott, for those answers. Before we get into discussion as a council, I just want to bring up two points. Someone asked, why are we only doing this on the loop? And I just want to point out, and this is a poor map for everybody in there, but this is going to be the one, two, three, four, five, six areas in San Clemente. So it's not just the loop that's being affected by this area. So that was number one. Number two, I'm going to read into the record change to the staff report that I feel like I'm going to get support from, from both the residents.
I was going to ask you if you were going to make a motion on that.
Oh, well, I'm not there yet.
Right, you were reading it in.
Yep, I'm going to read it in right now. And after I read it in, then I'll clarify exactly what it means for everyone. So give me a second here to pull it up. You have it?
Do you want me to pull it up? Okay, I wasn't sure.
If you have it, then it'd be easier than to read on my phone, so, yeah, I'd like to do that instead, and then people can read it as well. So effectively, what this is doing is we're adding in the 300-foot buffer between this additional, so additional development standards for stars. In addition to the development standards for STLU specified in subsection E of this section, the following development standard applies to stars. A star must be located at least 300 feet from every other star or other STLU. Now, this omission was left out of the staff report, but it will be included in our final reading, and that will be all parts of town, not just excluded from the zones or just the zones. It'll be every single part of town will have this 300-foot buffer for stars from other stars and STLU's. So Mr. Rowe, who printed out this very nice form that shows basically the stars can go uninterrupted as much as they want, will be significantly limited back to the numbers that were presented earlier by staff, which will be, I think, a win for not only Loop, but as well for Buena Vista. And so I'd just like to thank the residents for bringing that up, Mr. Rowe, and then obviously Mr. Ruland for bringing up those concerns because they were valid points that have since been addressed. The second issue that I'd like to bring up is, it's going to be my recommendation, hopefully I get support from my colleagues up here, that we make the Buena Vista section a standalone section, just like every other section, so that it's not inclusive into North Beach, but it is an addition of another zone. And so with that, I think we eliminate some more of the concentration concerns that Mr. Ruland and his neighbors were speaking of when they were talking about the North Beach, Buena Vista area. So other than that, I'm open for discussion.
Explain to me how that limits dense...
Yeah, so essentially, let me pull up the North Beach map here. So the North Beach map, Steve, you can see this? So currently, right now, we're fortunate, unfortunate, whatever term you'd like to use, in that where our residential inventory in the North Beach area is significantly limited to these gold spaces here, the rest of which are commercial space. But if you remember under the general plan, a lot of the El Comune rail corridor is zoned mixed use. And so we'll see a future increase in total residential properties over the tenure of our community. So by creating a separate standalone zone in Buena Vista, we thereby separate the concentration so that not only the concentration's focused on the Buena Vista Street, it would be spread out amongst the whole area because it'd be two separate areas.
So you're separating Las Follas is definitely not part of the area. It's, it's going to be, it's going to be separate. That's what you're...
It's the red line. I'm just following the red line.
Bucay de la Playa.
No, the red line. Just how it's on, delineated in the staff's recommendation. The only difference is in the staff's recommendation, it states that it's an expansion of the area. I'm saying we just add an area. Yeah, yeah. Okay. With that, I'll open up a discussion from the council.
Okay. I just want to make sure I have a couple of things said here. I think it's been reported that part of this expansion was due to the settlement. It was not due to that. Montalvo Lobiero was always considered when we did this almost two years ago. And at the end of it, one of our council members suggested that at 17 months, we go back and we look at Montalvo and Lobiero and consider adding them. So that was something we did from the get-go prior to any settlement. No, I'm not going to say his name. He's not here.
It wasn't Steve and I, just to be clear.
No, yeah. So that's helpful that you weren't even here. But it was always considered that we would do it, and we did it because there was some operating there, and we weren't hearing anything from them of worried about being cut out when that's what we were talking about doing. I do have a question, though, for, for staff really quick. For Montalvo and Lobiero, when, when people talk about the apartments that are actually oriented to Ola Vista, why are those added? They are not Montalvo and Lobiero. Is there a reason, Scott or Carl, that you know why that was added? Was it just because those were, it was an apartment building?
Your condo.
No, I'm saying whatever it is, but it's not really Montalvo. It's, the access is Ola Vista, is it not?
Yeah, well, there's two access points, but yeah.
Okay. So is there, is just, was there a reason?
As, as far as I was concerned, that was just, the reason was that that was what was recommended by the court mediator that I mentioned earlier.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure that there was some tie-in that we were looking at that one. People's...
Can I, if I could say, Ms. Ward, too. The other aspect was anticipating what the Coastal Commission was, was going to say about that. And we were able to, Coastal Commission didn't want these regulated at all, and so that map and that concept were part of our pushback that was occurring at the very same time that the case was being mediated, so that it dovetailed with the Coastal Commission's express sentiments made sense.
All right. I just wanted to know, because that, that was a good point, that it does orient it onto Ola Vista. The other question that was mentioned, a concern about anything that we do with STLU's on this, and anything with the settlement would, would bring out something with sober living homes. Can you comment on that?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's a really great risk. For one thing, these provisions and the adoption of these regulations is severable from, from the rest of the ordinance. So where these might be attacked, they'd be attacked separate and apart from, from the, those existing regulations. The other thing that we've done is assumed that sober living homes are not going to be subject to short-term rental regulations. And it's for this reason. The state law contains an override of local zoning for sober living, presuming that sober living is, is helpful for people where it's long-term and where it continues in existence. So we haven't been using it, sober, it's impossible, well, not impossible, but it's really difficult for a sober living home to argue that they should be permitted as a short-term rental, because when you think about it, that's not therapeutic for, for their residents. And so I, we've, that their boarding houses, that there are other aspects, are the regulations that we've been holding up to them, but not under the provisions of the ordinance that you're looking at tonight. That's a separate part that we think would be preserved if, if these came under attack. Would that make sense? It's just really hard. A sober living home might want to come in and say, hey, we want to be treated like other short-term rentals, but they never do and they can't because they don't want to be treated like short-term rentals because the state preemption that allows them to be here is based upon longevity and permanence, and so that undermines their whole argument about why they ought to be here.
Okay. All right, I just wanted, I wanted to make sure. The other thing that I heard from people was, we really need to have enforcement, and we need to do that. One of my concerns is, first of all, is parking. And what I would ask staff is whether, it was mentioned that we use RSVPs for maybe parking permit programs. Maybe we could branch out and use anyone that we use for enforcement of our metered parking for parking permitted zones for enforcement of that, if that's possible?
Councilmember Ward, we're currently looking at going, bringing forward a contract to the city council in the next couple of months that would bring private parking enforcement to the city of San Clemente. So that's something that we could look at as part of that responsibility within their contract.
Okay.
Undecided at this point. It would definitely be during the hours of operation of our public parking lots. We'd have to look at the cost associated to 24-hour enforcement, and we can do so and bring it forward to the council.
Okay, because that would greatly help with any metered parking, say, on Montalvo Lobiero. We would catch anyone that does not have a parking permit.
Do you have meters?
Um, hold on.
Times parking.
Okay, hold on one second. We're talking about parking permits, not metered. So, okay. The other issue that I have with enforcement is occupancy. Really, I mean, if occupancy of these are enforced, then we shouldn't have problems with, with the vacation rentals. So I would like to direct, and I hope that you've supported, staff to set up a meeting with property management managers in the city to devise a way that they're going to work with us on the occupancy enforcement to where maybe our code enforcement, when they are called, they call the property manager and they meet them there. And then possibly that will help with access and enforcement of that. And so I think the property managers will be, you know, will, will do that because they said they have the same goals we do, not to have problems. So the, yeah, the parking enforcement had to do with manpower. Let's see. Okay, we talked about the Pandora's Box. Scott, what about, we settled a lawsuit which does not have to do with bringing these areas to this, and we didn't bring it to the public for debate. Is that what we're doing now? Or, I mean, we...
It would have been so much cleaner. No, this lawsuit was settled, and the law requires that if there's a zoning element to a settlement, it has to be heard through regular means. So that settlement was presented and announced. It's been a public record. It's been a public record. The council, well, not counting last year when you forecasted, remember, Mayor Brown asked that this be brought back for full consideration. You did that in the fall. Then you had a separate initiation of the zoning that's before you. So this is the culmination of a full year of talking about this stuff. And it was not, the zoning cannot legally be done behind closed doors, and that's why everybody was invited to come and comment on it as they did tonight.
Okay. I just, I wanted to straighten that out because we certainly don't want to do that. The other comment about asking for lane lines to be moved and things like that, I don't know if anyone's willing to look at any expansion of an area at this point because we need to get this in place. Okay. I thought so. I just wanted to check on that.
I'll just clarify that for you. The reason the lines are drawn the way they are in the pierbowl is because that's the pierbowl-specific plan, and it's very clearly outlined, what is the pierbowl, what is not. And that's why it's outlined that way. Same with the T-zone.
And I think the pierbowl is residential high, and I think the other lots are not. They're residential medium. Maybe that's why they were left out. I'm not sure. I've been trying to figure that out, but, all right. So I would support your suggestion of the mitigation with the stars. Still not point out to me how STLUs or that density is limited.
So, so two things. One, Eric, are you, you sent that to me, you didn't send it to her, the link for the application. So on our application, it states that one of the requirements to apply for an STLU permit or a star is that you have to have HOA sign off before the city stamps it. So you have to get a letter of approval. So part of the issue that I think a lot of the people discussed this evening is if you have HOAs and CCNRs, your HOA has to sign off before that operator can get a business license from the city for an STLU. So that's going to limit the number of available tenants that are able to actually get a STLU permit. That combined with the fact that we are adding in the 300-foot buffer from STLUs as well as stars, limits the number of stars that are going to be available in both the new addition zones as well as the existing zones. So both those things combined are going to limit the number of available properties that would be able to turn into some type of transient occupancy. So unlike the proposal that Mr. Rowe provided us with, and then that Mr. Ruland also emailed us on, the numbers aren't nearly as high. They're, like I said, more closely aligned with what staff presented earlier.
Okay, so there's other conditions of approval that will mitigate how many STLUs or stars that we have in these zones?
There's other ones besides the one we've been talking about?
No, no, no. Other mitigations such as HOAs, other things like that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. All right. So that is, that was my thing, is we have to really mitigate how many could be in there. And I'm glad that we got this 300-foot buffer in because that was our original intention and stated all along.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, and I wanted to add a little bit on to that. First of all, this, a lot of conversation's been that, why are we doing this now? I mean, we're just all of a sudden trying to create this new ordinance. I heard new ordinance mentioned a few times. And it's not. This ordinance was done before I ever thought about running for city council, let alone on the council. So, you know, this ordinance was put in place, it's been adjusted a few times as we tried to go through and to get in a semblance of what workable, and then we had litigation to resolve on top of that. I think as most litigation and negotiations come out, when you have complaints from both sides that they don't like it, and that's sometimes points the direction that is a fairly good settlement when no one's happy with it. So that's one thing I'm looking at. I would like to recommend, I didn't look close enough at the app, but it would be great if every app actually had on it determined what the occupancy was for that unit, and when they're signing, when they fill out the form, they're acknowledging that's the maximum occupancy for that dwelling.
They do, yeah.
And so long as, okay, so that's good. And then I wholly endorse the 300-foot. I thought that was always there, much to my chagrin. So, yeah, the 300-foot separation between units will also fairly curtail when you have maximum 20%. Then on top of that, maximum, you can't be within 300 feet of another unit. That's going to help keep the density down, which is what we want to do. So that's where I'm coming from on that, and I'll pass it back to our mayor.
Mayor Protem, thanks for the promotion. Before I make a motion and get a second, we take a vote on this, I just want to fill you guys in on where I'm coming from this, on this issue. So I lived on North, in North Beach, on Buena Vista, a couple hundred feet from Mr. Ruland, and I lived in what I considered an apartment building that had all working-class citizens in it. I had the fortune of growing up in San Clemente. My parents never owned a home in San Clemente. We moved around all the median, high-density areas growing up as a kid because that's where we could afford to live. And so for me, San Clemente is very much a working-class community, and I want to see that maintained. My second apartment after college was on Buena Vista, and I rented it from one of the ones that has a yellow dot on it now. And I was evicted from my property to convert it to a vacation rental. And I was a fireman. My roommate was a fireman. We had two nurses living next door. We had two engineers living next door to them. We were all San Clemente locals, living and working in San Clemente, that were evicted for a vacation rental. And that's why I've been supportive, and I've been a driver in making sure that we have a fair-handed approach in ensuring that no one neighborhood takes all of the burden. And I know it feels like Montavo-Lobiero, the Loop is being added last minute. Unfortunately, just like our city attorney expounded upon, our current mayor, Tim Brown, threw you guys under the bus last year.
I can't believe it.
Against my, I was very upset because I liked the Loop. I liked the Loop a lot. And the fact that he threw that out is, we're going to look at that in 18 months.
I lived on Montavo.
Yeah, it's a great, it's a great place. It's a great community. I wasn't happy about it. And unfortunately, circumstances come down the road. We're at 18 months, and we're taking a second look at it. And hopefully, with the changes that we've outlined here on the board and the changes that we've talked about, make this slightly more palatable. I know it's not going to be the perfect solution, but hopefully it's something that we can all live with moving in the future. My expectation is that everybody will pick up the phone every time there's an issue, and they will file a complaint. My expectation is that with...
A wedding.
Yeah, with events being operated next door to you, you're going to call in a wedding event. That staff is going to work with Mr. Dandolk and his group, as he's already agreed to do, to ensure that we don't have the issues that we had on La Rambla and some other issues, parts of town. So with that, I'll make the motion, and then look for a second. So I move that we adopt with the following, with the changes to follow. Continue post...
You're just introducing.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, introduce the ordinance number 1654 entitled, Ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, Approving an Amendment to Municipal Code Title 17 Regarding Regulation of Short-Term Lodging Units. With the amendment, as stated here on the board, subsection 16B is added, and that's, I'll read it into the record, 17.28.292, add additional development standards for stars. In addition to the development standards for STLUs specified in subsection E of this section, the following development standard applies to stars. A star must be located at least 300 feet from every other star or other STLU, and that Buena Vista will be added as a fifth area. One, two, three, four. Added as a sixth separate area, will not be an expansion of the existing North Beach area, and that we direct staff to work with property managers to ensure that we have property managers responding appropriately with our code enforcement, and that we encourage code enforcement to get back up to full staffing 24/7.
And including that we look into parking enforcement, other options for our parking permits.
Oh, yeah.
And also that our parking permits have to, we've got to work on that program sooner than later.
Yeah.
Right away.
Absolutely.
And with that, a second.
Okay. Motion by Hamm.
Mayor, can I, or Mayor Protem?
Yeah.
Can I just, you're doing first reading of the ordinance, so I just wanted to show you exactly where this text goes. Pages 7A-13. There's a section 13 there.
Got it.
That section 13 will become 13A. And then the new text on the overhead will be a section 13B. And then while your eyes are there, if you look at section 14, that refers to a short-term lodging units, allowed area map in exhibit C. And that map is essentially what you held up, except that it will be bifurcated to indicate two subareas in North Beach. So you have, I want to make sure you had that exact text and mapping in your minds and before you, as I just said.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, with that, we have a motion by Hamm, second by Schwartz. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 302. Thank you for your patience, folks.
Mayor, there's a one related ordinance. You can get that. Okay, thank you, yeah. I beg your pardon.
Yep, so, voice up release.
Okay.
Folks, we've got to wrap this meeting up, so if we could have everybody just exit orderly, that'd be great.
Website in a couple days?
New business. No, we have new business. So next item is new business?
Yeah. Next item is regulation of short-term lodging units relating to administrative fines, transient occupancy tax, and solid waste collection.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for staff on this issue? No? Okay.
I'll have a comment.
Yeah, so it's just codifying things that needed to clean up. I'm going to be supporting it. Kathy, what's your comment?
I have, I have one issue.
Oh, great.
No, I have an issue. Page 9A6, on section four, it says the definition of a hotel. There's many, many things in there. If you go down towards the bottom, it says accessory dwelling unit. That should be stricken. And then also on page, great, 9A-2.
9A-2?
Yeah, I'm sorry, going backwards. I said it out of order. Number E, accessory dwelling unit is also in there, under 2E, and that...
I'll strike all mentions of this country dwelling.
That's great. I would like to strike any.
Okay, so I would like to commend Councilman Ward for checking the details on that one. You saved us there. So with Councilwoman Ward's recommendation of striking accessory dwelling unit from those two locations and any other locations that do not fit, I move that we introduce ordinance number 1656 entitled, Ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California, Amending Municipal Code Chapters 1.20, Administrative Fines 3.24, Transient Occupancy Tax, and a cross-reference to Chapter 8.28 and subsection 17.28.292E3, Solid Waste Management Regarding Regulation of Short-Term Lodging Units.
Second.
Mayor and Kathy, can you...
We're going to postpone that vote.
There's one little part, there's a heading that needs to be updated that Cecilia caught this afternoon. Would you point that out? Sorry, Cecilia.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Protem, counsel. On page 9A-5, it is section 3, 1.20.050, correction conditions. And it says applicability of this section. This section applies exclusively to building code violations. It actually should say building code and zoning violations because this allows us to, when there is a violation, notify someone that there's a violation, and then give them time to remedy or correct the violation. If zoning is eliminated, then we would have the ability to cite immediately, and I don't think that's the council's intent. So we should add zoning back in there, too.
Then they process this dovetail.
So I'm going to amend my motion to include the change that Cecilia Delardo Day just added. Kathy, you're going to second that again?
I will.
Okay, so amended motion and a second by Hamm and Ward. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 302.
Someone want to move for adjournment?
Communications part two. And no cards on that. City manager report?
Nothing to report.
City attorney?
Nothing more tonight, thank you.
Councilmembers?
Nothing.
Okay. I hate to do this to you, I just have one, one quick thing.
Make it happen.
I am being asked by several residents about bees. They're wanting to keep bees, and this is becoming a big issue in Orange County, and many cities are allowing permits for bees. We, at this time, I think ours says it has to be residential very low, and I don't know how many acres that is, but I don't know anyone that has that in San Clemente. It's, so bees are changing, and so what I would just ask is that staff comes back and looks at what Laguna Beach does, and there's several other cities that have recently changed their ordinances to reflect that people can maintain bees. So I just...
Well, we have to really be careful about that, don't we?
Wow, you elected him, folks. Be proud of yourselves.
So, anyway, that's, that's what I would like. And there's, I've read up on it, but, you know, have a staff report come back.
Just back for discussion, you're not asking for...
No, just to come back to us.
Okay.
They've been asked for it, and it's spring, and that's the only reason I'm bringing it up is because it is spring, and in San Clemente, we have warm weather a lot, so I think bees can survive longer than just springtime, so I'm bringing it up anyway.
Well, they hang around my house four up a month out of the year, but...
Okay, yeah, I'm okay with it. Okay, Steve? You got nothing? Okay. City attorney?
Already went there.
Yeah. Well, since your eyes aren't going to say anything, I would just like to take this opportunity to thank James for going up to Sacramento to fight for us against the toll road. He's already away from his family enough and then to have to go an extra day. So thank you, James, for doing that, and Eric, thanks for stepping in. With that, I will adjourn. Adjourn to a joint council commissions committees meeting to be held on Thursday, May 10, 2018, 7:00 p.m. at the Olhain's Beach Club located at 105 West Avenue to Pico, San Clemente, California. The next regular council meeting will be held on May 15, 2018, in the council chambers located 100 Avenue, Perseidio, San Clemente, California. Close session will be considered at 5:00 p.m.
Actually, close session now is 4:30.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Close session will be considered at 4:30.
New news.
We're not joking ourselves. And the regular business meeting will commence at 6:00 p.m.
Move.
Okay, second by Schwartz. All in favor? Aye.